All right, it is seven o'clock. I call this school grand town council meeting order. Uh, I would remind everyone that, uh, in the audience, uh, not speak until the council calls on you to, uh. Also ask the council not to talk among yourselves while, uh, meeting is going on. And what else? That's about it. Okay. Y'all have been reprimanded now, so. Uh, we will begin with a moment of silence if you're joining with me now. Thank you. Chair, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Lead lines, if you're able, face the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And under the republic which stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, review as option of the agenda. Uh, make a motion whenever you're ready.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
All in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, special meeting minutes. Uh, look over those and make a motion when you're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, special.
All in favor? Thank you. Public comments? No public comments, okay. Number six, old business, six A, discussion regarding request from Buster Bus for garden bed and new bus location. Anyone have anything to say on that?
Did we find out anything about the, uh, using the, uh, the bed down at the elementary school?
Uh, no, but now that school, they are looking to, as we've seen, close that school, so I don't think that would be a long-term option anyways.
Okay.
So, uh, however, I did ask about the possible, uh, you know, the possible options, and they're, they're having a meeting, uh, the school board is here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, I think we'll know a lot more then, but in terms of a long-term option, I don't, I don't think that would be here. In ma- long, long-term maybe, but short-term, middle-term, I don't think that would work there.
I just don't think the bus, if you park right there at the park, you know, especially if you have events and all that bus pull around inside the park, I just don't see it. I mean, that's just, that's my opinion.
Well, what was your thoughts on the, uh, garden, community garden?
Definitely won't dig up the ground, you basically have to fix, put a garden in.
Well, and now, oh, that land next to where the bus is now, they could put it somewhere.
Where over here, they could, yeah, you're right down there at the bottom, you could put a garden in down there.
Yep.
I'd most rather see it over there than I had to dig a park up, but you just paid all kinds of money to have done it.
All right. Anybody else have a thought?
That would be an ideal, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds sensible.
So we're not taking any action on that, I guess, then? We're not voting anything there?
Well, I can relay the message that council's consensus was to keep the bus where it's at and do a garden at the, if they want to do a garden, do it at the, uh.
Behind their bus?
Yeah, or we clear the cups.
Okay. All right. Uh, six B, discussion regarding events, uh, coordinator position. Uh, it was, um, create, uh, it was a possibility of creating an interview committee, including two council members. And the, uh, committee, events committee would like to have two of their members also on that interview committee.
Yeah, I'll do it if you want me to.
Okay. I'll all zero four. Okay. Is that good with everybody? All right. And two people from the events committee?
My understanding, it was just gonna be the council, the events committee wouldn't be, um, interviewing, or got the interviewing part of it. Why would they need to be?
Well, they came up with questions.
Well, they can give a question to us or to Mike and Dan.
Did anybody here come up with any questions?
Oh, sure. Yeah, like everybody.
I've got a number of questions, at least that one.
Okay.
Did they write theirs down in their meeting?
Yes.
They did, yeah, we have them. And we, we can do.
If I'm not mistaken, that's what you told me, it would be two council members.
That's what we had discussed at the last meeting. I did inform them that, you know, you all wanted to maybe have two plus meetings to do a committee of three. Uh, a couple of them wanted to see about the possibility of adding one. Uh, at least one, maybe two committee members from their committee to our committee. Uh, just to see, I, I think their main point was they're gonna be working with them a lot, so they would like some say so. If you wanted the council's committee to maybe have more of a deciding factor in that, then you could do one, or you don't have to do any, it's up to you, but they felt, uh, they felt like they wanted to have someone on the committee if at all possible.
Well, thanks for that idea, I'll have somebody else in the committee. Because the more people have questions, you know, they may think something we have it all about, it's important now, though. Because now, none of us actually work with this thing and stuff, that's why we don't handle this, but. Uh, there might be things that I don't even think about.
That's why they give us their, their questions, so we'll have their questions.
They, they can ask questions, but obviously, well, they're having to do it. Except for you guys, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not against having somebody make that.
I think it's necessary.
They won't have a vote on it, they'll have input on it.
Yeah. I think it's just gonna, we do that, it's just gonna draw the process out longer and longer. We need to be doing interviews and be making decisions instead of going through all these questions and every time, it's like something else we have to do that throws us further behind, and we need to move ahead on these things.
Mike, Terry, Dan, how do, how do y'all feel about it?
It doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay. Mike, what do you think?
Oh, Mike said they might have input whatever he put on, they'll be working with them more, we will.
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
If you wanted to, either way, we would need a, a motion and a vote, whether it's to appoint the council, the two, uh, Dan and Mike's group as, uh, committee members, uh, and then if you wanted to add either one, two, or none from the other committee, that would need to be a motion to make it happen, there's no formal request in front of you, so it'd need to be motions both ways.
So you need a motion for, uh, Ben and myself to be on the council on the, with you.
Hiring the committee.
Interview process.
Yeah.
And what's the second motion, says?
If you wanted to then, uh, include.
Oh, that's a lovely thing. Actually, there'd be two separate motions.
I would probably do it as two separate motions, because you may or may not have support for one or the other.
Well, I make a motion to have Ben and myself on the personnel or interview along with you, talking to, uh, potential candidates.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor? All right, thank you.
And, uh, I make a motion to allow up to two people from, uh, the events committee to have input and possibly sit in on the meetings, if they don't have any votes or say so.
All in favor? Opposed?
Uh, nowadays, thing would be just to, um, to make sure we don't draw it out to the next month. Uh, the committee didn't identify any of their, their own members. Now, we do have three of the five here, three of the five voting members. Uh, but in terms of which two, does it matter to council? Do you want them to figure it out amongst themselves? Do you want to pick? It's up to, at this point, it'd be up to you all. Otherwise, we have to come back to next month and have to take it back to them.
I think with a lot of events created, pick whoever wants to be on the committee.
Just informally, let me candidate someone and see, do they, do they recommend?
They got the committee, they got the group that they work with.
So, not long here, that one, I share it some here.
Right, and what I can do is I can reach out to them and send them an email and just let them have discussions on who they want.
Yeah.
And let them just pick amongst themselves.
We'd like to get to the, uh, interview schedule as quickly as we can, so we started this over six months ago and they got it postponed.
What I would recommend, you do currently have twelve applicants, since council wants to be on the actual committee. Uh, those, the post, we can close at any point, but I think it's set to close in the next six to eight days, uh, online. Uh, but you have twelve, twelve applicants who fully filled out the application. Um, what I would recommend is setting up, uh, a time for us to all go through the applications with the two committee members from council, and then the, the two from the events committee, to review the applications, file that down into three or four, who you actually want to interview. I can give the set of questions ready, we already have some, and then we'll have some standard interview questions. Uh, then set up that, make sure each council member and, or council committee member and events committee member has their questions, and then set the interviews, if that's.
Have you set a date to cut off the applications?
Yeah, it's in the next six to eight days, I can't, we have a thirty day runtime that we purchased with, uh, Zip Reprigger. So it, it does expire in the next six to eight days. We can close it before that, but i- if you're satisfied with twelve we have.
Twelve, twelve's plenty, I think.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. That's like a big plan to.
Have, have you looked at their qualifications yet? Are they qualified, I mean, at least mentally?
Uh, I hate to comment on too many of them, but I would say you do have several that I, I think you have enough to interview.
Okay. Read one of the new business. Uh, seven A, consider approval of resolution adopting regional mitigation plan.
Okay, so, um, you can read through the resolution or if you have already, but essentially, every five years, we have to adopt a, a uniform hazard mitigation plan. What it is, is we have a plan for all four counties, and we're included in that plan, that four county plan. So it's not what you're doing, is you're adopting the resolution to, uh, to be part of that, to make yourselves part of that plan in terms of the four county area. Um, any questions you have, it's federally mandated, if you want any type of federal funding, uh, reimbursement wise, if you have any natural disasters or issues, droughts, something like that, uh, you have to have this plan in place, so staff does recommend that you adopt the plan.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution adopting regional mitigation plan.
All in favor? Thank you. Seven B, consider approval of restripping and, and pavement repair codes for town hall and budget amendment to go with it.
Okay, so you do have, um, three different quotes now, uh, the first one here, uh, for seven B is for the town hall parking lot. Uh, what DDI is proposed to do is to have a subcontractor, uh, do some pavement repairs on areas where patching won't work, or sealing won't work, uh, to do patching. It wouldn't be repaving the entire parking lot, it would be critical areas that need to be patched. It would be sealing areas that have, uh, that essentially need it, that are either new areas or the old areas that were sealed, uh, and then restripping it. They have, uh, quoted for, uh, ten thousand three hundred fifty for council's approval. We would need a motion and a vote to accept it.
When we get an actual invoice, will anything be broken down as to materials, labor, et cetera?
Uh, we, we could ask them for more of a breakdown, but given that it's, it's under, um, it's under the thirty, then we can ask, we can ask for that, if you'd like more of a breakdown.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, quote change order for the cell test and start in town hall parking lot.
All in favor? Thank you.
Does that include a budget amendment?
Oh, yes.
So your motion?
I need to make a motion for what?
Did your motion include the budget amendment?
To include, uh, budget amendment.
So everybody's in favor of that, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Uh, okay. Seven C, consider approval of codes for bollards at Royal Park or posts.
Yeah, if you want, if you want to, uh, turn to attachment, uh, seven C. So I broke it out for you, uh, the quote, there, there's two different quotes, but there's three areas we're addressing. Uh, so on the actual memo, I'll start there. Uh, we're proposing, uh, six inch bollards at one spot, and that is going to be along the uh, walking track from the current breezeway where we just redid the end cap of the breezeway. Um, the first step would run from that point to the new concrete pad in front of the gym. You would have six inch, uh, diameter bollards, so six inch, uh, bollards, uh, steel with concrete filled. They would be every six feet, um, run down that line. Uh, you have a quote for thirteen thousand eight hundred to do that. Uh, the reason for the six inch bollards is they're, they're more crash proof. Uh, you're doing a couple of things, number one, you're keeping cars off your, your sidewalk, and also protect, uh, protects pedestrians who are walking on it right now, there is no protection. Uh, then number two, uh, you're protecting the, the area right there in front of it, the sidewalk and the grass area. Currently, we've had a couple individuals who have, uh, driven on the grassy part over on the other side of the sidewalk. You've already got some ruts, so it'll prevent that. Uh, and then number three, it prevents anybody from using a vehicle, at least a, a motor vehicle, you still use a bike, but given the six inch or six foot width between the posts, you wouldn't be able to get a, a four door vehicle, a truck, into the actual park itself. So it protects the, the park, it protects the sidewalk, and it protects the, uh, people who are walking on the walking track. So then, the, uh, second quote is going to be for what we have as areas two and three. You have a map, if you turn the page. So area one is up in blue, that's what we just talked about, the six inch, uh, thick bollards with, uh, a placement of every six feet. Then you're gonna have a red and a green area, so the red area is running from, uh, the backside of the, uh, breezeway that was connected to the tower. Here runs down from, uh, the bottom of those steps, all down to the opposite side of the maintenance building. And then you have a crossover, uh, that would run from that sidewalk over to the top side of the maintenance building. The reason for this, uh, so for areas two and three, the green and red areas, the proposal here is a four inch thick bollard every ten feet apart with chains in between them. Caution yellow would be the color, just so people can see it. Uh, it would be, it's, it's cost prohibitive to try and do six inch bollards every six feet down through these two areas, and you don't have the same traffic. This is going to be much more minor traffic, just people who pull up in behind. But it would still, it would still accomplish the same three things. Protect your sidewalk, protect people from getting parked, and protect people on the, uh, the pedestrians who are using the sidewalk. The reason for the crossover, uh, between the sidewalk and the maintenance building is this would keep people from using that as essentially the parking area. You would have a removable chain, uh, so that the town or, uh, your current renters, H H D A and Golden River, they can still get their vehicles down into that area, the parking, uh, garages, the three bays that we have. They would still be able to access that, we could give them a key, but it would keep your, your, uh, uh, just the, the average everyday person from access in that, that area would just stay. Uh, then on the green, the bottom left, the green area, that runs up from the, uh, rear auditorium parking lot entrance from First Street Southwest, up to where the new sidewalk meets the, uh, the parking lot, the pavement area, so that would prevent individuals from, uh, entering that back grassy area or, uh, that new front grassy area. So it does the same three things, protects people from entering the park, or keeps people from entering the park, protects your sidewalks, and it keeps people from entering the sidewalk where pedestrians walk. That quote is the second quote. Uh, it is to do the four inch thick bollards every ten feet with a chain between them. Uh, for both those, the red and green area, that quote is eleven thousand one fifty five. So you can vote to approve one quote, or two quotes, or you can vote to approve all three, or, uh, all three areas, both quotes at the same time. Staff recommends doing them all, because I, I've, based on the traffic flow and the safety concern, I think you're gonna need them. I think it's without a doubt, you need that front area up in blue, but I think probably gonna need them in all three areas. And a fourth area that hasn't been considered yet, because we're looking at possibly doing a second pavilion down there next to the concession stand, uh, would be that lower annexed parking lot coming up, uh, coming around towards the concession building. We did have, I believe, two inch bollards with chains between them every ten feet prior, but because we're looking at doing some additional work there, that area hasn't been considered yet, but will need to be considered at some point.
Do they have any idea how many they're going, they use, if it just says total?
No, they, they do have a number, I don't think I have that number, but they have given us one. Uh, I believe it's twenty-six for the six inch bollards up top, but I do not remember the exact number for the four fo- uh, four inch bollards every ten feet apart. But essentially, that's what you have, is a bollard, a ten foot space with a chain running between it, and so on and so forth, till you get to the, uh, the ending areas.
Well, there again, on the invoice, I would like to see a breakdown of what the parts that are used and the labor separated out, so we know.
Okay, more detailed invoice.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
These were, the reason they're not is these were tr- treated more as change orders early on by DDI, instead of like hiring a company out for an invoice, but yeah, we can absolutely, you know, not right now.
Well, I'm making my, we're gonna do all three of them.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you. Seven D, February facilities report, uh, that is in your pocket, if there's any questions there. Seven E, January tax report, that's in your pocket. Seven F, January deputy report.
Don't jinx it.
Okay. Okay, um, seven G, committee reports. I'm not sure I have any questions on any of that, it's on one. Brush. Technical coordinating committee?
Uh, we meet this one, same.
Okay, transportation advisory committee, same. Western P on council government policy board?
Uh, next month.
Birth development?
Uh, B D I, we reviewed the, uh, January twenty twenty five financials, uh, for last month. We discussed, uh, possibly doing a spec building at the Burke Business Park, and then they provided a housing update, the, uh, the average sales price is up significantly, but the median sales price was only slightly up. So what that says is, uh, you had quite a few larger value homes that were sold that kind of skewed it, but generally, that, that, the median, the average home buyer, uh, in terms of buying an house, the price was only slightly up, and your market inventory is up for housing, so you've got more on the market than you have last year. And that's all I got.
Um, Vedic?
We meet Thursday, and they're going to give us a tour of the new office, this is the heavy no rocks go.
Burke County Library Board, we didn't have a meeting this month.
Events committee? Who's gonna take that one?
I can tell you, you can tell you to do that, or we can have, uh, Karen, take you to the chair. Uh, the events committee, so we, uh, we discussed the event schedule. Uh, we discussed the, uh, Easter egg hunt that is set for April, uh, twelfth. Uh, we're gonna meet, uh, next month before our normal meeting to prepare for that and get everything ready. Uh, three thirty on March twenty-fourth. Uh, the part-time events coordinator, so you already know, uh, we informed them that we have twelve applicants, council is looking to create the, uh, committee. That's when they provided input, they wanted a couple, uh, representatives from their committee on it. Uh, they did give their questions over, we can talk more about that with, with our committee that we've created. Uh, they had questions on the, the park, um, we went through the auditorium updates, uh, and then, uh, I believe they are looking to, instead of have a full-on festival this fall, they want council to consider doing a smaller event, not a full-on festival, given the timing. The problem is trying to get big vendors for a festival, normally, they do a year out. Uh, so there was some talk, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, or fill in the gaps, uh, when you may want to call them, but, uh, doing more of, something more similar to the Longview Night Out at this one.
Maybe y'all have anything?
Until you get your edict coordinator hired, um, you're not gonna be able to plan this fully, so it'll kind of depend on when you get them, is how big of activity you can have.
Okay. Was there anything else, any questions on this? Okay. Um, all right, that's all for the events committee reports. Uh, eight other business, um, I had something. It had come to our attention that, uh, some land has been purchased over in the Klein Park by a company that, uh, deals crypto mines. And you say, well, what is a crypto mine? Um, Rick, can you help me?
They, it's basically a big warehouse full of computers trying to do a lot of math.
Okay. Uh, so the upside of this is it'll bring a lot of tax revenue. The downside is it could produce noise. And, uh, we had discovered that in other parts of the state where there have been crypto mines, they can put a ban on, or a moratorium on. So we wondered why, so we called up to Cherokee County, they have three crypto mines. Uh, talked to the, uh, assistant county manager, and she said that yes, that, uh, people had come into their count, uh, commi- uh, commission meeting, what am I trying to say, their county meeting. Citizens or neighbors had complained about the noise. So, um, I'd like for council to direct staff to investigate these crypto mines and investigate possible, uh, ordinances that could keep the noise down.
So we're gonna send you to Cherokee.
Well, you know, we would have killed here some of it.
Seven, seven days, six nights, absolutely, it's ain't nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Not in the gamble, yeah.
Is it the business park? It's called the bollard?
Yeah, over here in Klein Park, yeah.
Yes.
Right next to, uh. Well, computers create, uh, heat, so we have to have fans to cool them. And, and she said, she said, well, they put some in an old factory and it didn't bother anybody, but.
I think the, the issue with, um, some of the ones in Cherokee is they have no zoning. And so I think the bigger concern there was you would have house, house, crypto mine, house, house. Whereas like us, we have industrial zoning, we have manufactured zoning areas. Whereas like us, we have industrial zoning, we have manufactured zoning areas. There's a certain buffer requirement. Uh they're not located like rock mineral residential neighborhoods. So I think, I think that was more of their issue is um just the proximity to a home. I I definitely don't think you want to live beside them. But if it's, you know, a thousand feet or so out from a residential neighborhood. I think even the zoning that you would have would allow it. So it's more, well, we want to do more research and maybe talk to some folks, but again, I think the ones that they, the reason they did the moratorium was to allow. Time to research zoning ordinances so that they could better figure out how to regulate it. And to keep them from, again, popping up in residential neighborhoods because they have no zone. Uh we have zone unfortunately, but they didn't have any.
Was it purely the noise or is it electrical consumption or other things or?
It's, I was going to say, most of the noise is the exhaust fans because these computers are really tightly packed. And they've got to move a lot of air in and out of this building. And it's basically the exhaust fans making all the noise. And when you can hear it from a distance, like if you wanted to sit out over your porch, that kind of thing.
And some of them are just put in these big metal shipping containers, right?
Yeah, just, they seem to be more problematic.
So you guys are going to research and get back to us to talk to our planner and see what.
Yeah.
What are these thinking about?
I can bring you something back uh next month.
All right, I have one question. I'll leave you alone. Have you talked to Scotty about the leveling of the park out here?
There is going to be some, there's a couple of things that are going to have to be done in terms of leveling. So I did talk to them about just overall leveling of the, there there seems to be two creases that almost forms a T. They're telling me that was intentional for water runoff. However, there is uh quite a few areas near and around the sidewalk specifically. Uh where we're doing one of the sets of bollards, I believe it was the red area, that needs some dirt. Like, there's a, there's a pretty significant drop off.
Well, right there, there's a, but there's a big hump. We walked down, looked at it earlier. If you walk down the sidewalk, there's a breezeway down the sidewalk right on the left and and they've got a drain. But the water's not even gunning to the drain. You've got that big hump across there. It's coming around. It's stopping to make a mud hole before it ever gets to the drain.
Yeah, if you want to walk that with me, we have a final walk there next month, but if there's some areas that look like that, yeah. Yeah, we want to look at it.
I've got something else. I pulled it up when y'all were turning on the uh splash pad. Okay, you see all them pipes, valves, and the roads?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's gonna have to be closed in. Because there's gonna be people down there, and they're gonna mess up the whole thing. It's gotta be the building.
Oh, yeah, no.
It's gonna have to be closed up.
So within our existing uh budget or our contract with DDI. There is, there's going to be a fence put around the splash pad. You'll be able to enter it from the the existing entrance way. And then there'll probably be a second entrance way down the road. Once you get your pavilion in, so there'll be a second one there. But so so within that fence quote that they've gotten us change order, there will also be uh um enclosure that you're talking about.
Yeah, we're gonna be locked up when you can't get in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Lock down you, we were going to go where we adjusted it, that and then what to do.
Okay, yeah. That they they provided us a uh quote to do that.
Uh I've had three calls about the uh trailer park across from uh KFC. Do you know anything? There's a trash pile out there, stuff been pulling all over the place.
I saw it today. Huge trash pile.
Yeah.
Terrible.
Can you check with?
Does anybody else have any uh other business?
I was just going to ask, um. Was there any tuff harder to draw on for this out here, how it's supposed to like?
According to.
Not when you get the architect or engineer, whoever did the draw to. It's those humps and that pitch, that you know, nothing to do with it all. So that's going to be a liability. I'm afraid now. I'll walk down there, Terry, that's going to be something.
Some of it, some of it, according to what they're telling me, was done in preparation for the pavilion. So it is somewhat. You know, intentional, but yeah, we can look. I can check with them.
I just think it's a lot of doing down there for it's all that's sad and sometimes it is a fall trip, especially not. Older folks come in, something at the park, they trip over it. Then you're going to have to deal with that. If they have a big, it's gonna be like, no, I'm saying.
Yeah, we uh again, I've asked, you know, the site supervisor, he's telling me that it's laid out the way the engineers drew it up. But now if that's not to our, you know, what we're looking for.
If it's about downtown. The water ain't going to the drain. That ain't what we want. And you put the drainage stuff in, it don't work. The water's not backing to it. You can see the butt, Jared walked out of it with the stud, you can see the butt. If it's making a ditch somewhere, it's something like that.
I'll get with the uh our tag, the site supervisor, and we'll we'll go out there. Okay.
Uh Mount Heathrow will have a, be having a barbecue fundraiser Saturday, the twenty second from forty seven, fifteen dollar plate dinners.
March?
Yep.
Okay. For the auditorium, so we did get the the bids in. Uh DDI was the low bidder. So we're in talks with them on uh the the scope of work and we're we're looking at uh the addendums that were presented. I think what we'll probably want to do for the sake of time is have council do a special meeting here in about two weeks, three weeks. Uh call a special meeting to review that that contract and all the addendums and then possibly look to move forward on it. Is that something you guys are comfortable with or do you want to wait till next month?
That was best and weakest, fine. But then on, after March tenth, my wife has surgery about us, so I may be here and I may not. Been on your call, baby.
Would you want to do maybe?
No Tuesday or Friday.
We possibly look at March sixth. It, again, it it's one of those things that could take no time at all or it could take an hour and a half. It's it's just depending on council and kind of what your um expectations are. What you agree on, what you don't. How much discussion you want to have, so. If you want to look at March sixth, does that work with everybody?
What day of the week is that?
Uh it's. It's on a Tuesday or Friday.
I think this is good.
March sixth. Um what time do you want to add? Same time, different time, earlier or later? Six o'clock.
Complexable, six.
I was just, I just said six, I don't.
That's good.
Work for me.
Uh March sixth is sixteen.
So you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor? All right, thank you.